Well, everything seems to be working, so I'll call an order, the regular meeting of the Tracy City Council. Will you stand to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bill, are you doing the invocation there?
If you do, make it shortly.
Let's see anybody for the invocation, so... Next item will be the approval of the agenda.
We have technical difficulties.
Bling, yeah. We're not on yet?
We're on.
We're on.
What's wrong?
We're missing the remote for the monitor.
Shane can override here.
Okay.
Sorry, Mayor.
That's okay.
Technical difficulties.
You can't have a meeting without them. Looking for approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions?
I'll make a motion to approve it as written.
The motion is seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There is no public hearing tonight. Time for public comment. Before I open up for public comment, how many folks are here to talk about the senior center? Okay. I'd like to, before we start discussing anything, put some rumors to rest. And then you'll be given two minutes to state your case, and then there'll be a public hearing on the 23rd if this all goes, went to plan. But, the senior center's been closed since March due to COVID and the governor's orders, and it's probably, the way things look, not be able to open another one up until June. But that's, if you can figure the governor out, more power to you. So, in June, April, May, June, somewhere in there, the EDA has been on this path of trying to reduce the number of properties that the city owns, to get them back in the tax roll, to help increase our taxable income, because we have so much debt coming with this street project and infrastructure projects. So, somewhere around June, they got into contact with the owners of the Platte Moose down in Slaton, showed them around town, showed them some buildings, and the path started on. They liked the multipurpose center, and the path took that direction. Lot of discussion, nothing's in stone, nothing's decided. The council decided to have both Eric and Jeff look into this and how to make it work with the rules of engagement, for lack of a better term, where we try and make LSS happy, we try and keep our seniors in a place that they're comfortable with, and we try and bring a business to town that's going to add jobs. That was their goal, they're still working towards that goal, and yet, there's still stories. So, August, some members of the LSS management staff came to town, they looked at different avenues and towns that would try and suit their needs, and they couldn't come up with a suitable, financially viable other location. So, they started, we started looking around, Jeff and Eric, at other properties that we had where we could combine everything. The kitchen above the old armory was big enough to suit their needs, it would take a little upgrading. So, we tried to get LSS to come down, and they didn't answer our calls, and they didn't respond to the emails. So, we got ahead of the game and sent them a letter about their lease. Normally, we just ignored it and waited until January to approve it, but we're trying to get things going and get everybody's timeline to work the same. So, they come in, little bit of a chip on their shoulder thinking they were getting thrown out, and that was as far from the truth as could possibly get. They were not very open, for lack of a better term, to the upstairs kitchen, but it came across as they were afraid they were going to have to pay for it all. And it's very expensive to put a commercial kitchen in any place. We assured them that the move would be, the kitchen upgrades would be taken care of by the city. The cost wrap-up, and that would be what we sell the place for, and what we save in revenue from spending on that would cover the cost over there in a couple of years. So, to date, we haven't heard back from them. Sent them a second letter two weeks ago, we have not heard back from LSS, so we don't know where they stand. Eric and Jeff have met with the senior dining board, the Golden Age Club, and most of you folks in here already are aware of that. So, what I want to say is, we're trying to work things best for everybody concerned. Not everybody's going to be happy, and that's just the way life goes. There's a lot of possibilities out there, there's a lot of options. We have six months, you know, to come up with alternatives, because I don't see it opening before then. So, that being said, I'll open it up for public comment. You'll be given two minutes, state your name and address, and I'll run the timer.
I'll go first. Bill Tower, Tracy, I'm here as the Activities Director for the school, representing Tracy High School. And just another thought, I mean, we're all for any positive moves we do downtown here with the VMC. As you know, we've invested a lot of money in the inside of the VMC, with the floor, the bleachers, painting, acoustical tiles, winches, all that we did with the city a few years ago, which was a great cooperative adventure. And now with the senior center being talked about, and new business going into town over here, which is great, and we're not trying to put a damper on anything, but just something else to think about as a possibility for a space. We were lucky enough this past year to get a grant for security, so at the school, we were able to put a vestibule on the front of the school. If you've had a chance to come out and see it, come out and check it out. But if we could do something like that down here is what our vision would be, out in this area between the two buildings, that has the tree and the grass area, and put a nice commons area out there. It could be used during the day for the seniors or any other groups, meetings, whatever could be held in there. Nice glass front windows out the front. And the kitchen upstairs could still be used for those things, and this be downstairs, so they don't have to go up and down steps, or maybe you wouldn't need the elevator. Just a thought. On the school side of it, when we have tournaments and things we hold here, I went back a year calendar-wise. Before COVID, we hold at least 12 tournaments down here a year that brings people downtown Tracy. This is the number-one asset that we feel we have downtown Tracy, to bring people downtown, to see our businesses and things like that. But one of the complaints we hear from teams and spectators is, you're either in the gym or you're outside. For here, if you're wrestling tournament in the winter, middle of January, it's 10 below, you're either in the gym or you're outside. You have no place to go in the gym. We have no concessions, we stick them in a corner, or in the garage, or all that could maybe be in this commons area out here, that could be used for numerous things for the city, for the seniors, for any other groups that wanted to meet the school, it would benefit the school, the kids, and the town. And it would be a great addition to this facility. Just another phase of what we've been doing with this facility that would benefit all of Tracy and the area, so...
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for your time.
That's Phil.
Okay. I'm Shirley Anderson, and Ms. Campbell here told me that we had three minutes. Okay?
He doesn't run the meeting, Shirley.
Well, Mother and I met with Eric Hanson and Jeff Carpenter on October 23rd, and they told us at that time their plans. They said an elevator, not a lift, they said there was about 1,700 square feet upstairs, and a kitchen. There was over 3,600 square feet in the multipurpose center. There's a lot of difference between 1,700 and 3,600 square feet. On Monday, October 26th, I presented a little history of the multipurpose center and asked people to have an open mind. And at the council meeting, the lift was mentioned, a unisex bathroom, and since I was the one that spoke, when I got home, I started getting phone calls. And they're still calling me. And I've received over 35 phone calls, and people have stopped me in the community and wanted to talk about this proposal. Not one person had a positive thing to say about this move you are proposing to go upstairs. They all had various issues, which made a lot of sense. One of the big issues was safety, and not wanting to go upstairs at all. At this point, if the council decides to move the multipurpose center for the community to the second floor, the seniors I've talked to are not in support of this move. Many are saying that the council is pushing the seniors into an inappropriate place for them, just to save money. I was on the library board when the library was moved to the three-story building where it is now. The building was purchased for $65,000. Then it was gutted, new walls all inside, a new ceiling with new lights everywhere, new shelving, a new main desk area, which was purchased from the cabinet maker in Walnut Grove, and that was not cheap. And then the upstairs was finished, plus several new computers, a security camera system was installed, plus new furniture. Last year, the city spent $120,000 for the basement. How much are they spending for the utilities, for the upkeep of this building? It's very nice and well-used, we know that. We also have a pool, which is in the red every year, for about $70,000 for our kids. Great. We also have wonderful parks in our community. Now we have a new lighting system from several years ago, plus bump-outs on Third Street, which everyone doesn't agree with, but they're there. And are you getting the amount out of this building that was put into it? Donated funds of $100,000. It's wrong. There are a lot of people who use this multipurpose center, such as LSS, Lions Club, Golden Age, ladies groups, cirrhosis clubs, several card clubs, my mom belongs to five of them, bongo club, 13-card club, fitness classes, soup suppers, and people coming in the afternoon for coffee and dessert, anywhere from 12 to 20 people. The center is also rented out for birthdays, family reunions, graduations, and numerous other gatherings. At times, you can have three card tables in the back room, which is 12 people, three tables underneath the windows to the south, which is another 12 people, you can have eight people playing by the TV, and then we've even set up card tables in front of the coffee table for eight people to play bongo or 13. Then you have the coffee group come in.
Shirley, I don't mean to interrupt you, but that's three minutes of writing.
That's 3:00 PM. That's 50 people. Okay?
Shirley.
Okay.
Thank you.
Remember, we have $100,000 that we've used for donations.
Oh, I'm supposed to finish?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I'm Becky Avril, and I'm going to finish what Shirley has prepared here. The new kitchen costs almost $70,000. The range hood itself costs $45,000. The second-story windows cost $10,000 or $12,000, which should have been considered upkeep, but was paid for with donated funds. Then the air conditioner went out, and we went to the city, and they said they did not have the money. So, once again, the donated funds paid for a new air conditioner to the tune of $10,000. The building was sold to the city for $1, and at that time, they agreed to do the maintenance and upkeep of the building. The city has paid for the utilities, it has not cost the city what Eric Hanson is saying, if you minus these donated funds. Initially, grants were obtained for all the remodeling and everything that went into the center. The only thing the city has purchased is a TV and a small refrigerator in the vault. These donated funds, $100,000, should be returned to the citizens of Tracy towards a new building. This would be a good start. What price is the building being sold for? Are they getting really what is worth with the upgrades that were put in? It seems there is a big rush to move the MPC, but we don't need to rush this through. What good is it going to do if you remodel this and rush it through, and people are not going to go up there or utilize it? It will be a waste of money. This is a wrong decision for our community. Some other cities have been contacted about how they have proceeded to build their community centers. We need to investigate this further. This project should be stopped, moving forward with other options should be researched. There are better options for our community than a second floor with a much smaller space, safety issues, and people do not want to go upstairs. The city council needs to listen to the citizens and their wishes, not just go along with this fast-tracks suggestion of the city administrator and the EDA director. I just want what's best for the citizens and the community of Tracy. We need a committee to liaise on with the citizens and the city council in this regard. We should also consider a fundraising bank account for this purpose, but we need to keep track of who makes donations and how much, so we can thank them. And if it is a taxable, we need to give them a receipt for their donations. Thank you for listening and hopefully stopping this move. I do have one last comment. I asked to be put on the agenda for a discussion of this subject, but Mr. Hanson refused this request. I would like to know if this is how the city council has instructed the city administrator to operate or handle such requests. In all her years, the city administrator, Mrs. Cooper, never refused anyone to be on the agenda with any issue they wished to bring forward to the city council attention. Am I done?
Yes, you're done. Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I guess I was elected on this one. This is kind of a dream sheet. I'll tell you a little bit about what's been happening. Ken Witten and I have traveled to several different communities smaller than Tracy. Each of them have an attractive ground-floor community center. So, I have a question, why doesn't Tracy have one? If the old liquor store is demolished, a new community center could be constructed, abutting the old, the outdoor patio. This would be an ideal location, would provide plenty of parking. Rather than focus on using funds to renovate an existing building, excuse me, let's consider providing funds for a new facility and design it to meet the community needs at ground-floor level. I am requesting that you direct the staff to explore funding available through rural development, any other agencies, and check your grant funds, and check it to see if grant funds are also available. Because of the virus, the center is not being used. We have time. We need to move slow and do it right. Do not be concerned about the relocation of LSS. When I talked to Jason Swanson, Executive Director of the Minnesota River Area on H8, excuse me, he assured me that the meals on wheels would be provided out of Marshall until another location is available in Tracy. So, the program will continue. In closing, I would like to thank the staff for meeting with us and listening to our concerns. Hopefully, we can continue to move forward with this project. Again, thank you. Let's work together and see if we can make this project become reality. Thanks, Councilman.
Thank you.
I'm Vera Anderson, 701 Randall. I'm also a 1945 graduate of Tracy. Everyone knows the history of the multipurpose, so I'll start with your yes vote to redo the armory room. Now, this is different. It's going to be a scenario. I hope you listen, and I want to finish. Here we are. We're playing cards, several tables of 500, and bridge. We're really enjoying ourselves. Oops, here come the guys, they're coming for coffee. It's a full house. Oh, oh, there's sparks. What's wrong? Now, there's a full-fledged fire. I'm in a bad situation here. If I try the stairs, I'm going to be trampled. I can't do that. I'll have to wait and be the last one down. I can't use the lift, because you don't use that, or an elevator, in a fire. So, I'll have to be the last one down. Oh my God, I am the last one down. But I'm still here. I died. But I can't come back to tell each and every one of you that you signed my death certificate. That's how I feel. So, now, what I wish you'd do is go back to your yes vote and rescind it to redo the upstairs at the armory, and then work with all seniors for a new community center or a ground-floor building. Senior centers, senior citizens have no business in a second-floor setting. Thank you for listening, and I'm very glad I didn't start crying.
Thank you, Vera.
Dr. Duvette, I just want to tell you that I told my son about the upstairs, and he's been an architect for over 30 years in the Twin Cities, and he says you can't put a senior center on the second floor, it has to be on the first floor. That's what I have to offer.
Well, appreciate that.
I'm Cleone Richardson from Tracy. While I don't live in the community, I have been a member of the community activities for almost all of my life. I hope you all got the email that I sent you, and read it, and would consider it. I too believe that a second story is not the way to go, and that you need to consult seniors before making such an important decision. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay, and I want to stress this one last time. No decisions have been made. This is a long, drawn-out, thought-out process. There's no ink sign, nothing's chiselled in stone, not a nickel's been spent. We appreciate your input. I would urge all of you to form a committee and come up with a list of things you want in the building, and try and do some fundraising for it, or fill out paperwork for a bond, or whatever. We are so cash-strapped right now with this infrastructure project. To take on the task of building a quarter-million-dollar building without a kitchen, mind you, that's what the price of it would be, is undoable now. We're already at almost 200% of our tax capacity. So, you've got to decide if you want higher taxes, or you want a taxpayer-paid-for multipurpose center. That's up to you.
Mayor, I had originally intended to have some information under staff reports, but I think it would be appropriate to maybe move that up so that it could be, you know, right after this, if that's okay?
Yep, that's fine.
And I can talk about the other stuff I was going to mention at that time later. A couple of things that I want to say, you know, before we get into this information. You know, two weeks ago, that the vote was not to move the senior center to the upstairs of the MC. The vote was to ask the city staff to get some information about it, in terms of costs and things like that. And so, you know, I think we need to be clear about that.
Yep.
That's, first of all, really, really important. Secondly, the reason why we have public comments on the agenda is so that citizens can come and talk about any item that they wish. So, citizens are always on the agenda. They are on the agenda every city council meeting. And I support them being on the agenda. And in fact, when I met with this group of seniors, I told them that they should come and talk on the agenda at that time, because that would be the appropriate place to do it. So, we would never deny someone's opportunity to speak on the agenda. Let me talk about a couple of things that I think are really important, about just updates. We don't know a lot yet about the total cost of what it would take to put a kitchen on the second floor over there. It's been a little bit difficult, because, first of all, we weren't sure exactly how the structure of the building was. We had to look at some really old written building plans in order to do it, and try to figure out, because one of the biggest problems we had is we needed a four-inch drain pipe, and we only have a three-inch up there, and trying to figure out how to route that. So, figuring out the scope of the project first before we could do any of the quotes was really difficult. And then on top of that, we were trying to see if we could get, you know, some commitments for people to do something by the end of the year, because that's when LSS's lease expires at the other building. And we've had trouble finding plumbers, which is the biggest expense, who were willing to commit to that. So, I told Shane today, I said, forget about the timing, let's just figure out what it's going to cost. And so, we don't know the total cost yet of the big plumbing piece, of doing it, and so we're still collecting that information. Unless you have more information on that, Shane, tonight, that I, since we haven't talked this morning.
I don't have a lot. There's a lot of missing pieces that the state hasn't gotten back to me on.
Yeah. And so, we're investigating the building code associated with a lift versus an elevator to the second floor, and a whole variety of other things. I think people are making, you know, some assumptions, or talking about things, and we just don't have the answer to yet at this point. We do know the cost of a lift, because I have a quote on that. And the total cost of a lift, as we had discussed before, would be $82,953. Now, that, we have asked Lyon County for some money to pay for that. I was told by the county administrator today that he didn't think, we would know on Thursday whether we were going to get any money for that, but he didn't think that it would be the whole amount. And so, but I don't know the answer to the question as to what it would be. And so, that is the one hard cost that we know for sure. And so, at some point, we'll have to decide, is that something we want to go forward with, regardless of the situation with the senior center? There might be some benefit to having a, you know, more accessible second floor over there anyway. Last week, we have, Jeff, and Jeff's not here tonight, unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, otherwise I would ask him to comment on some of this, but we have been very, we spent a lot of time talking to seniors in the last couple of weeks. Last Thursday, I called a meeting to do a focus group, and we met with 14 seniors, a lot of them are here tonight. And I asked them a question, I said, well, you know, tell me what you would want in a senior center. And you can see the handwritten notes on the board over there, and we listed a whole bunch of different things that they might want there. And then I gave them each essentially three little dot stickers, and I said, okay, well, if you go up and you put where your top three would be, you know, where would you put it? And keep in mind, this is a focus group, and so we don't know that it's, you can't say it's representative of the entire community's feelings, or even seniors' feelings, it's just the feelings of the 14 people that were there, which is a lot of the people that are in the room tonight. And we, the top two were really about socializing and it being on the ground floor, so 10 of the 14 that were there thought that those were their top, their top three items. The third one was about having, it's food there, isn't it? Yes. About... is that something we want to go forward with? Regardless of the situation with the senior center, there might be some benefit to having a, you know, more accessible second floor over there anyway. Last week, we have, Jeff, Jeff, and Jeff's not here tonight. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight. Otherwise, I would ask him to comment on some of this. But we have been very, we spent a lot of time talking to seniors in the last couple of weeks. Last Thursday, I called a meeting to do a focus group. We met with 14 seniors. A lot of them are here tonight. And I asked them a question. I said, well, you know, tell me what you would want in a senior center. And you can see the, the handwritten notes on the board over there. And we listed a whole bunch of different things that they might want there. And then I gave them each essentially three little dot stickers. And I said, okay, well, if you go up and you put where your top three would be, you know, where would you put it? And keep in mind, this is a focus group. And so we don't know that it's a, you can't say it's a representative of the entire community's feelings or even seniors' feelings. It's just the feelings of the 14 people that were there, which is a lot of the people that are in the room tonight. And we, the top two were really about socializing and it being on the ground floor. So 10 of the 14 that were there thought that those were their top two, their top three items. The third one was about having, it's food there, isn't it? Yes. About having a meal. And so of the, of the 14, four of them thought that the meal was in their top three, things that they wanted there. And, you know, 10 of the 14 thought the other, others were important. I thought it's really good, you know, directional information. You know, you can't say that this is the opinion of everybody, but it gives you an idea of, you know, what people are thinking. And I thought it was a really good opportunity. Shane was there and Jeff was there, too. And so out of that meeting, Ken Witt had put together a survey and, which I thought was a really great approach. Well, we know what these 14 people thought, but we don't necessarily know what the community, how the community feels as a whole. And I think it's important to collect that information. And so Ken, Ken developed the survey and, you know, we met, Ken and I met a couple of times and we talked on the phone and kind of decided that maybe that was too many questions for one survey. And so we cut it down to essentially three. One of them is a question about what kinds of community facilities that we might want to have. One is a question about what, what, what do you want in a facility in terms of the activities? And the third one's just kind of a free-form question. You know, tell us what you think. And so we committed and we, and I, I shot it over to the paper today to having this community survey out there, both in the paper. But we also, it's going to be, you know, ultimately, you could fill it out in the paper if you want to and bring it into City Hall. But we're encouraging people to go to the City of Tracy website. We have a, on Wednesday, we'll have a Survey Monkey survey up online so that everybody in the community can respond to this survey. And we'll put it out there on Facebook and we'll, we'll let, it's going to be, a reminder that will be on people's water bills that go out tomorrow as well, that they can go to that, as well as the, the ad in the paper. And, you know, hopefully, you know, people listening tonight will, will hear that, too. So on Wednesday, if you go to the City of Tracy website, there will be, sometime Wednesday, I don't have an exact time. But Wednesday, there will be a button on there that will link you to the survey. And we'll put something out on Facebook about it. And I think it's important to have that information so we get a sense for, you know, how the community feels. And I, I, I think that is, I think that's what we're, we're in. What you have instructed us to do is collect information. And that's, that's what we're doing. We, the staff, was also instructed to bring back, you know, some, an information in terms of an alternative, in terms of what we would do. Because a lot of the folks in the community, some of them are here tonight, you know, said, well, jeez, you know, you're gonna be selling the multipurpose center, but you have no plan. And so ultimately, you know, what we're trying to do is provide options for you for that plan. Some of the other things that we have looked into as well is if you were to build a new building, one of the suggestions was, well, you know, why don't we have a new community center? We could have a place with a kitchen where seniors meet, et cetera. Well, they built one in Westbrook about, well, within the last 10 years. I went, I, I made a phone call to the mayor of Westbrook and I asked, I said, well, what, you know, what did that cost? And what, what did, you know, how did that happen? He said, well, it cost about $550,000. And it included a kitchen and a space for seniors of about 60 seniors and an event center of 400 people. And $450,000 of that was a donation from a local, local farmer. That would cost more today if we were to build the, the same free-form structure because construction costs go up. And so you can add whatever you think that might be, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars to that cost, probably. And so that doesn't tell us exactly what a new structure would cost, but it gives us an idea of something that, that we could. So, so really, your options are, in the big picture, build a new facility, move it into an existing city space, or, you know, you know, remodel something that we, that we already have, you know, in an existing, remodel an existing building. Those are really your, your only choices. And so, like I said, as a city council, you've asked us to continue to collect information, which we are gonna continue to do. And as you said, Mayor, there's no decisions that have, you know, been made on this. And it is accurate that we sent a letter to Lutheran Social Services two weeks ago. We haven't received a reply from them yet, asking them to collaborate with us in this process. And I want to thank the seniors because they've been incredible in terms of their collaboration. And we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep doing that as a staff and we're gonna keep working with people. And, and, you know, I, I think that that's how you get things done in the community, at the end of the day, is you work with people. And so that's what we know so far about what a new senior center might look like. Shane, is there anything else you want to add in terms of cost of facility or anything like that?
Well, unknowns right now.
Yeah.
To put a price on it, say, as in the lift, but, you know, the question is, is that would be, be used for a senior dining upstairs, that the lift is sufficient enough? We never answered on that, too, so.
Yep. We don't have a full answer to that question yet. There's a bunch of variables associated with this, and so.
It's about five different sectors of state agencies that I'm waiting for calls back or emails back on. They're really hard to get a hold of right now. I got ahold of one today, but he said, oh, you should really talk to the other guy. I already left a message with them, so.
Yeah.
It's a whole lot waiting, but eventually they will.
The, the other thing I want to, the other thing I want to mention in terms of, in terms of the size of the space, and that's kind of really important, too. It is accurate that the current multipurpose center is larger than the floor space up above the VMC. The kitchen space and the claw, and the storage space at the VMC will be, is, is almost exactly the same size as what you have over at the multipurpose center. What you don't have in that is a little less floor space. There's about 1,000, a little more than 1,000 square feet of floor space, open floor space. The total area up there is about 1,500. So some of that's taken up by the kitchen and everything else. Over here, actual floor space to floor space, if you compare it, it's about, it's a, it's closer to 1,600 or 1,700 of floor space over here as opposed to 1,000. You can think of it as roughly the equivalent of the main room that you have that's adjacent to the kitchen and right in the middle, and then the large back room, not the pool room, but the large back room. Those two spaces together are roughly 1,000, about 950. And so it's, it's roughly equivalent to that kind of space. Just to give you an idea of what it, what it looks like in terms of space. And so, yes, it is accurate to say, to say that it's less. You know, by our count, building occupancy loads would be about 100 people in the space up there. The question is, can you do the correct egress, you know, with just a lift or a full elevator or what? You know, that's, that's, that's the question. We don't know at this point. And we don't know what the cost would be to retrofit, you know, the kitchen. So at some point in the future, when we have more information, you know, we'll bring it back to the city council. But the citizens should be rest assured that, you know, our directions are to, as you said, Mayor, try to make this work. And that's what we're doing. So that's my report on what I know currently as far as the state of the nation on this. I shouldn't have said state of the nation. That was a terrible thing to say.
Can I, can I say anything here or be quiet?
Yeah.
First off, that business at Westbrook costs that much money, but that holds a lot of people. I don't think we, we're not asking that here from these folks. And I wouldn't want to build that because that would compete against already a business in town.
Yep.
So that being said, those numbers are probably correct, but not even close to what I think everybody in this room you're thinking back there, anyway, or me sitting up here. Secondly, I'll never, as long as I live, vote to move seniors upstairs. And that's case closed. So you can keep researching. You can keep trying to get stuff put together. But far as I'm concerned, it's not gonna happen. There's other council members, I understand this.
Appreciate that.
There's other council members, they got their own vote.
That's right.
So they have to put their big boy pants or girl pants on and figure it out. I've already figured it out.
Yeah. So, so ultimately, council member, what we're doing is providing information so that the council as a body as a whole can make a decision, whether it be this council or a future council. And, you know, some of those folks sitting here will move forward. And so ultimately, you know, we're, the staff is doing what you requested us as a group to do. And that's what we're gonna continue to do.
I guess what I want you to continue to do is to move forward with this survey because, yep, there's, well, two, four, six, eight, 10, you know, maybe 12, well, no. Can't forget the guys over there. Sorry, Bill. You know, say 15 people here. And then we had 14, which kind of crossed over. That's a sampling. I want a larger sampling.
You bet.
Because I have heard both sides. I'm not gonna say which one's heavier or not. But that's fine that you've made your decision up. I will make my decision up. I'll have big girl panties. But I want a lot more input because we are talking for the people that voted, as said. And that's a lot larger group. Because the taxpayers, be it someone my age, which I'm not quite senior yet, and even ones younger than me, this is gonna affect them if it goes with tax money. So I want that survey out there. I want people to realize there's different ways to fill it out because not everybody is comfortable going on and doing a Survey Monkey. So that there's gonna be copies. I want people to realize there's gonna be surveys at the city offices, correct?
Yep.
Plus something in the paper that if they want, they could cut out and,
Yep.
fill it out that way and drop it off at the city offices. Because I do want to hear representation from a lot larger group. Because even if I'm not a senior now, in years to come, I will be a senior and I will hopefully be using the center. So the decision I make right now has to affect everybody and take that into account. I do want to reiterate, like Tony said, a final decision has not been made. We directed to get bids and stuff like that because that's one of the things that's gonna set. If it's gonna cost us $500,000 to do the upstairs there and we're not gonna get any COVID money or grant money, anything, well, then it, that weighs differently than if we could do something and we know it's gonna be more than $50,000, but it would be a lot cheaper. You know, that part, the money part weighs in. But a lot of good points have been brought up as far as the safety and those concerns that the, the seniors have right now. They're very legitimate. I think we're doing the right thing now by trying to meet with people. And people come, we have the public hearing coming up. We need people to come forward because I want a big representation to say, this is what we want. Because if it's gonna cost taxpayer money, people need to know that right up front. Because we are very much in debt because of the needed infrastructure repairs and replacement. But that has taken on a large chunk of our debt right now. So right now, I guess, make it short and sweet now. Please, get the survey out there and people need to fill that out. So encourage people, encourage your friends, encourage your kids, your grandkids to fill it out, even though it's not their center. It is their center. They just might not use it as often right now. We need to hear their input, too. Because we're not taking this lightly as a council.
Not at all.
I will say, we are not taking this lightly. And we are balancing with a new business and everything. None of that's being hidden. But it doesn't mean we don't want to make sure all three avenues of it are happy and we don't lose anything. We don't lose the good business or new business. We don't lose the LSS and we don't lose our senior center. Those are all three priorities to us.
Can, can I ask this group by a show of hands, how many of you would be willing to wait for 12, 18, 24 months for a new facility?
Can I say something in regard to that or no? Can I say something?
Well, I wasn't done counting yet, but I got the majority there. Go ahead.
All I'm saying is, if we're talking about 18 months down the road before there's ever gonna be a building and COVID restrictions are done in June, we would want to be able to go somewhere. We would want to have a place.
No, I, I understand that. And it's my understanding that most of the groups down there have found a place to go.
No.
Not, not all of them, but.
No, not one. One, one, eight people. That's it.
Okay, so, all right. Ken?
I had, I had planned on not saying anything, but you know how it is.
Sometimes you just have to.
Ken Witt. The, the survey, kind of an understanding from us that it's a start. It's, it's not anything statistical in the community. Most of the community doesn't know much one way or the other about what's good or what's not good. So it's just a start. And, and so it's not really an indication, a final indication of, of what should happen or not happen. It's just a start.
Yep.
All, most of the seniors are talking about making a new facility into a lot more than what the old senior center was. We're talking about having a lot of events and a lot of activities, not necessarily meal-type activities, but activities that bring people into town because we believe that, that that's a way to help all the other businesses in town. If you've got people on the street, some of them are probably gonna go into the store somewhere and spend some money. And, and so we believe that, that that's gonna be an excellent way to promote the city. We don't know if you can have enough new houses in town to compensate and improve the tax base quick enough. I mean, even if it's two or three a year, maybe it's not enough to really help the situation. So we believe with the sports events and other types of activities that we could really get a lot of people in town. So, so whatever the money is that we'll end up spending is gonna probably help out a lot of other people more than just this, just so-called community center. So thank you for giving me an opportunity.
Thanks, Ken.
Is there any way we can know what the questions are on that survey?
You got to send a link.
I sent them to you earlier today.
My iPad, it's gone.
They're pretty simple.
That's fine.
Yes.
I can look now that it's working.
I had you try and do it by memory.
You have it.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I appreciate everybody's patience. And, and I want to reiterate again, there is nothing set in stone. It, it would make it a lot easier, especially for the new council, instead of everybody getting all wound up and, and all angst, is to call and talk to them. Talk, talk to your council members. Don't wait to the 11th hour and, and come up and be offended by things because we don't know what you want unless you tell us. And for some reason, they got out there that we made a decision that all this is gonna happen. And that is as far from the truth as daylight to dark. One of the questions that the, the council got on the forum was how are you gonna help control rumors? Confront it. Find a source, confront the source. If you know something to be true, support it. If you know something to be not true, find out where it started from and confront it. We have shot ourselves in the foot as a community so many times. And it's all because of rumors. I'll get off my soapbox, then. We're up to the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 26th minutes, the approval of municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage.
The motion is second, is there any discussion? Diane, call the vote?
Teves?
Hi.
Tal?
Hi.
Shones?
Hi.
Landay?
Hi.
Mia Peterson?
Hi. Motion carries. We pay breakthrough.
I'll make, go ahead. I'll make the motion to approve accounts payable for breakthrough beverage.
I'll second that.
The motion is second, is there any discussion? The motion is second, is there any discussion? Call the vote?
Shones?
Aye.
Landay?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Teeps?
I'm staying.
Oh, sorry, Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Just testing you.
Just testing you, you pass every time.
Hey, I expect it. Under Mayor Council Communications, I mentioned it to Eric before the meeting started, I had a couple citizens call me today and want to know how come there wasn't any phone numbers on the websites for everybody, and I would like, can't really tell you guys to put your phone numbers out there, but I'd like to see it, some way of getting ahold of each and every one of us without relying strictly on email. It, everybody knows where I work, so I get all my calls at work now that my phone numbers changed, but
See, mine used to be out there, so I have no problem with going out there.
If, if, if council wants us to put their phone numbers on there, absolutely, we can do that. I mean, if, if you're telling me to do that, we can make that happen.
One thing, by doing that, it'll make it easier for them, because it seems like they're finding me, one way or another. So just we'll have it out there, so they don't have to search.
Does anybody not want their phone number on the website? Okay, we'll get all their phone numbers on the website. You make the note of that, Diane.
I want my home number. Yes.
You want home numbers, or, or just home numbers?
I have one number.
I have just the one number.
Yeah, I just have my cell.
Okay, so
Same number Diane from
Basically the cell for everyone except for Jerry wants the home phone number. Okay, we can do that.
You know, I maybe come across a little strong here, but I think that you're doing a great job researching the crew, city staff, but I think we almost need to stop wasting time on it and look at something more than just that. And maybe are, I don't know, I have not run across that.
What, what would you like us to do, George?
Get them off the upstairs. I don't care if you
I, I'm going to be candid with you, you know, I mean, I, I realize this is a public meeting, but I work for the body, you know, and that means all of you, as a whole, not individually.
Right, you asked me, so I told you.
Right. So that's your opinion, I, I understand, but what I would suggest, you know, I mean, it's important, I mean, I, I, I've been around city councils for a long time, you know, I was a council member for six years, I was a mayor for three, I was a county commissioner for eight, in addition to all the other work that I've done, you know, as a staff person. And my, my personal advice to you all, and for new council members, is you've got to talk to each other, you know? If, if, if you want to go in a different direction, talk to each other about it. And I, and I pledged this to you, my goal is to help you find the best possible solution that you can as, as a group, and that involves collecting information on things that you may not do. Because it would be irresponsible of me not to provide information to you so you can have those comparisons. Some things are not, not good choices, but it's okay to have them in front of you so that you can reject it. That's, it's, it's important. So, so ultimately, we're, we're working to try to provide information so you can make good decisions. And I would venture to guess that the decision on this isn't going to be made until after, you know, the new council is seated anyway, but, but that's, that's, that's my, that's my thoughts on the issue, and I'm probably being more candid than I should, but
Now, there's no such thing as too candid. I, I just want facts straight to, I don't want fluff. So, no, you can't be too candid. So I'm thinking, okay, if we need to talk as a council, it has been an open meeting like right now, so is this, if you're saying, you know, you want him potentially looking at different options, then this is the place we need to decide, discuss it and decide what other directive do we want to give him. Right now, we've given him a directive to get quotes for that upstairs. What I'm, I'm just asking you, as a discussion, are you asking that we support as a group to have, direct him to look at what it would cost to put up a, a building? We'd have to give him directive as far as, okay, what size and stuff like that?
Well
You know, I, I don't know what you're wanting either, George.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I guess I don't have a cut in stone answer, only thing I have is, in my heart and my mind and my soul does not allow me to go with an upstairs.
But then as a council person, you have to bring forward options.
Okay.
Because we have to make some decisions. And maybe if something comes in reasonable on a ground level, then that's what we would all vote for.
I'm surely not in favor of raising taxes. You know, I pay taxes here too, and a lot of people have told me they really can't afford much more, so I understand that too. I sometimes wonder, and it's probably too late, as I think more, I'm new at this, so I, I don't think the way the rest of you that are seasoned. But maybe we jumped the gun on getting rid of a building to bring a new business in before we really knew what we were doing. Just so excited to have a new business in town, oh boy, that's great, and I think it is great, and I, I've always thought that, but maybe the new business should have found a different place.
Well, I think we're going, I personally think we're going through the steps we have to go through.
Right, that's right.
We had, we had to tell LSS we had a, a thought. We had to inform them of that thought. Now, we can work through anything, and we can sign them to a new contract in two weeks to do six months out of that building.
Or we could do like Ron said, Ron said, Jason Swanson told him, don't worry about meals on wheels, they'll cook them in Marshall, bring them over. So why, why do we have to?
Right, that's not a worry of mine.
Okay.
That's not a worry. What a worry is, where are these people that so desperately need a place to go for socializing, which they can't right now, I understand that, but there will be a day when we can go back to visiting again.
And that's why I asked them how, how much patience I had.
Let me throw out a couple of, you know, other thoughts as well, because, you know, we actually had a really good meeting with the seniors last week, and, and it's always interesting to me how you feel like you come out of a meeting that was really good, and then all of a sudden, you know, things kind of go around the other way, and I think that's because people, you know, they stew, you know, after a while. But I will tell you, one of the last things that we were asked in that meeting is, geez, you know, we recognize that this might take a long time, it might take, you know, a year or longer potentially, and we didn't even know when COVID is going to end. And, you know, one of, one of the folks there said, well, well, do you think that the, the Flat Moose would let us play cards in the back there, maybe we could, you know, do some of our senior stuff in the back of there? And I said, well, I'm sure that they would, and Jeff even actually went and talked to them about it, and they said, yeah, we could probably work something out. So one option is a temporary option, is, is to use some of that space for some of these activities that the seniors are already doing. And low and behold, restaurants are allowed to be open. And so if you could actually even open some senior activities in a restaurant that you can't open in a community center, I know that sounds crazy, but that's the way that these rules are written. And so, you know, my point is this, there are a lot of ideas here, let's not get hung up on it's this or nothing, you know? There are a lot of choices here on the table that could be considered by this council. We just haven't had an opportunity to explore them all yet. Sorry. Oh, I'm, I'm done. I, I, I'm, I'm done pontificating.
Well, and I think we should still go forward with the kitchen up there. That would work for LSS, that could work for senior meals. And weren't we talking a couple of years ago too about putting like an atrium or something out, some type of building out in this area?
It's been brought up a few times, this possibility, but it's not going to be cheap either.
And the question that no one has asked the school district is how much money you're going to contribute to this.
Right, right.
But I mean, if we could, I want to still keep going down that path of a kitchen up there, because it may be the, a price that, like I said, LSS could still use it, senior meals could use it, I mean, that could all potentially still be used out of, out of a kitchen on the second floor. Do we do a senior center up there? Maybe not, but we'd have a kitchen that could facilitate it.
And, and the other option that Shane brought up last week, that could be another choice for you all, is, is that, well, why don't we put the senior center on the first floor over there, and we move the police department on the second floor? You know, I mean, then you don't have these issues of, of ground floor, and you can still put the kitchen on the second floor. I don't know what that option costs either, because we haven't looked at any of those kinds of things, but, but there are lots of, you know, potential choices, there's unlimited choices in terms of where, you know, you might go with all of this. And I, I think it's important to remember that as a community, we're all on the same side. We're all on the same side. I'm on your side, you're on each other's sides, the seniors are on your side. Just trying to make the community a better place, and that's it, you know? And, you know, if we work together and not like this, we're going to get a lot done.
Yep. I'd like to piggyback, Eric, on your point about communicating amongst ourselves. There is nothing that prohibits me from calling Jerry and saying, what do you think about this idea with the senior center doing this or that, to get some feedback from her? Or turn around and call coup. But when you call somebody and you start deciding how you're going to try and make them vote, or you try to persuade them to vote in one way or another, that's where you roam. You could talk to each other about anything, as long as you're not trying to sway a vote in one direction or another. And it's kind of hard, if you don't have that, to come and sit in here and act like you were all on the same page, because you're not, because we don't know what each other's thinking. We need to quit being scared of shadows, use your head, and go forward. I'm off my soapbox now, I've covered all I wanted to cover.
I think this discussion's been great, so I appreciate it, thank you.
It needed to be done.
And I, I apologize if I seem kind of strong, but
There's nothing wrong with being passionate about things, George.
Well
You don't need to apologize at all.
I want this, I would like to see the senior center, and I don't mind the kitchen, I don't even mind the lift, but I don't want to stuff them up there. I just, in my mind, I can't do that. And go to church the next day, that don't work either.
And that's why nothing's been decided, we're just looking, we're looking for possibilities and answers.
And I hear you, I hear you say that, and I'm not arguing that, but it seemed like we're only looking one direction at this point, because we're looking at a lift, we're looking at doing the kitchen, we're looking at this, I have not heard any other things that we're looking at.
Well
That goes back, that, that goes back to where we should pick up the phone and call and say, hey, how come we're not looking at this, this, or this? Well, I don't know, we'll talk to Eric about it, and next time we're in chambers and get it done. But waiting to the 11th hour isn't going to get you any information to make a good decision. You know, it's, if you've got something that's, that's eating at you, go tell Eric, say, hey, this is really eating at me, can you find out what the rest of the council thinks for me, if you're afraid to go one on one?
Eric and I have visited.
Yeah, let, let him
I don't think my little spiel tonight was a surprise to him.
Well, I can honestly say none of it was a surprise to me, but
So are there other things we want to, as a council, ask Eric and staff to be looking at? So you feel like we're looking at some other options?
Well
And you can sit there and say, we need, we can't be focusing on one option, but then we're not
Well, he looked
Looking at other options.
He looked at another option, I was talking to Westbrook with their big facility, with the big high price tag, that's not what I don't think we need in this community, and I don't think that's what the seniors want. We need to scale it down to something to size, and yes, it's probably a quarter million, I don't know, time you get all the fancy stuff in there for the kitchen and
If you're going to pull
But if we're going to put 50,000 or 60,000 in this kitchen, maybe we should be putting it in that kitchen instead.
If you put a commercial kitchen in a new building
It's going to cost more.
It's going to cost you about $200,000.
Do you think it's going to be cheaper than this one? What's up there except the hood? You've got new floor, new walls, new things.
A new hood is about 70 grand, the floor is about seven.
I'm telling you, you've got new floor, new walls.
Well, I'm Here's, here's, here's what I would say, council members, is that we don't know.
That's just it.
And we, we don't know anything, and of course, the staff is already looking at other possibilities. Now, part of yours, I, I would, I would suggest to you, when you say that's not what these people are looking for, the short answer is, we don't know people's opinions. We know some people's opinions. That's the reason to do the survey in the first place.
Right.
You know, the survey is asking the question, what kinds of community facilities do you want? What kinds of activities that you want in there? What I would like to do is take that information and then say, okay, well, how do you build a facility that does those things for people? Not just for the seniors, but for the entire community. And that's actually one of the things that happened at the end of this meeting, I was asked the question, well, are we, we talking about just a senior center, or are we talking about a community center for all ages? And I said, well, let's just talk about the senior center first, so I know what your opinion is based on the seniors. But we got to the end of the meeting, and people said, well, we really want to talk about a community center for all ages. And so, it's, it's, it's important really to listen, you know, to what people have to say, that's what a survey is about, that's what a focus group is about, you know, and not make too many assumptions about what we think people think. Let's just collect some information. So I'm already doing that, in terms of collecting other information and options for other things. This is not a quick process, you know, by any means, but I think that if I'm going to come at you with an option of a new building, we need to know what that building is. So that's really kind of the first question. So I don't think we're in any way prepared, you know, at this point, to have a full discussion about what all the options are, but we'll get there.
So is there any way to kind of look at the, because I'll be honest, I kind of thought about putting the police station upstairs
Yeah.
Myself, as I was hearing more and more concerns about them being on the second floor, I'm like, okay, so on the main floor, it's pretty much the police station, or the dispatcher, or not dispatcher, but
The office, it's the police office, yeah.
And
The chambers in there, yep. I've had a conversation with the chamber about potentially moving to another space above where we are sitting right now. Lexi and I, you know, went up there, and Diane actually came along too, and, and she thinks that something like that could potentially work for the chamber, so I, I think that's something that'd be worked through. I do know that Jason, police chief, you know, he really needs some additional space anyway, because right now, he's got an interview room that's basically stuffed with stuff. You really need to have a, a better situation for him, so if you did that, it probably would, you know, be helpful to the police as well. But we don't know what that bottom floor looks like in terms of the size, it's not going to be as big as even what you have upstairs, and you've got concrete walls.
I kind of looked at that a little bit.
Yeah.
We're looking at probably 1,100 square feet on that level
Yeah.
Versus 1,500 above.
Yep. And so we still probably put the kitchen on the second floor, so if you, if you, if, so they, LSS or whoever would, would operate the kitchen upstairs, and then we just bring the food downstairs, you know, on a tray or whatever. And, and, and so it probably would be about the same amount of floor space, it just would be cut up a little bit differently, depending on whether or not we could remove the walls, and we don't know that, because we don't know if they're load bearing yet. So, so it's, it's, it's an option, you know, we're exploring as well, as well as the potential of a new building, or a remodel of an old building, you know, downtown.
Whatever we do, we want to try to, not that we're not, but we want to keep focused that we could do something that would bring more people to town, rather than, there's not a lot of stores to shop in, but just more people to town
Yep.
And make it attractive, an attraction, kind of like the pool. You know, we don't make any money on that pool, but it sure is nice for those that use it, so maybe we need to think it's an investment in the city, to make it better.
In, in context, yes, I think that could, could make sense. Now, if you're talking about keeping things within the footprint of the current VMC, you know, you're probably going to save some money on the utilities costs, you're going to save some money on operational costs, that if you built a new facility or added on to this one, you wouldn't have savings on anymore. And so that's something, you know, you need to think about, and, and in no way am I suggesting that we should not spend taxpayers' dollars on seniors, I'm just saying that you, as a city, lose that benefit of, if, if you were, find a spot that would work in City Hall.
Instead of City Hall, yeah.
Right. And I, and I, and I hear people say this too, you know, they'll say, oh, well, you know, it shouldn't all be about the money. Well, no, of course not, it's not all about the money, but at the end of the day, you have an unlimited amount of budget. I mean, you know, George, you're saying, well, I don't want to raise taxes, but I also want this, well, you know, I mean, that's what's getting our federal government in, you know, why they, they're borrowing money, you know, like it's going out of style. So, we've, we've got a, my, my, it would be irresponsible of me, because my fiduciary responsibility to you, to, to tell you that you can afford everything, because you can't. You can't afford everything. And so you can make choices, we're going to do this, or And so, you can make choices, we're going to do this, or we're going to do that, but, but sometimes those are hard choices, but you, you've got to make them.
Should there be a conversation with the school to see?
I, I, I think that, I think that if, if we get to the point where we want to try to build a new facility or add on to something, I think that having a conversation with the school makes a lot of sense, sure, particularly if they're willing to, to put some money into it.
I think the school is more apt to if it's connected here.
I would imagine so.
Not if we build something somewhere else.
No.
If it kept it close enough, I'd like to be happy.
And while we're on the subject of money, there's a couple other things that I could bring up, you know, it's interesting, somebody mentioned rural development here, because I'm the one that actually brought it up in the last meeting, because we can borrow money from rural development up to $450,000. Now, that's borrowed money. There is not really any, there's a, a community facilities grant program through the USDA, and that's a $50,000 grant at most. And in reality, that doesn't, you know, touch anything. There, there really isn't any money for a building like this. I don't want you to hold out thinking, we're going to go find a big pile of cash to build a new building. It, 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 it doesn't really exist, you know, in that way.
And as we get farmer, that will donate.
Donations, donations, you know, if, 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 if that's the direction that people want to go, I, I think you've got to give them a target.
Yep.
You've got to know what it is. So really, the first question is what kind of facility that you want to have? Because somebody's not going to give you a quarter million dollars at a pie in the sky facility, we don't even know what it looks like. So the first step is what kind of facility you want to have? And so that's, that's kind of the point of the survey. We can talk a little bit about what that's going to look like. And then, you know, you can, you can have a discussion about, okay, well, is that a half million dollar facility? Is it a hundred thousand? What is that? You know? And so, and that's going to require some work. This is not something that happens overnight, however, and it requires collaboration with the community and with city council to make it work.
And, and if I'm thinking right on that, if we want to build any type, size of community center, there's nowhere right inside town that we could build it.
Oh, yeah.
There's, there's probably some options, depending on how big it is. You know, one option is over there by the liquor store, we own that land. The other option, honestly, is you've got the Masonic lot that's out here that's empty as well. I mean, you know, they had a building on it for decades.
But don't wait, but if we're going to build something that you can get, let's say, 200 people in...
Don't need to be that big.
Well, if, if we're going to build, well, okay.
You've got to, you've got to think about the entire community too, you know? I mean, it might be something that you want 200 people in, I don't know.
I've seen a lot of community centers, not that I drove around like some of them, but our family is quite large. We would go to a small town or a community center and rent that community center for our family Christmas, because we don't fit in a house.
Right, 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 right.
And if, if you have a family of 100, God bless you, most of them are in a 50, 60 stage, so if we can accommodate 100, 125, that's, we don't have to build for that one family that has 200.
But you're...
Build something that's...
But I don't want to compete with the caboose either.
No, I don't either.
Because that's their bread and butter.
That's right, and that'd be the worst thing we could do.
Their receptions and their events, that's their bread and butter, you know that from you.
I know, but I'm talking, if we're building, if, let's say we build a facility right out there that seats 110 people, where are you going to park all the cars?
That's why that place, that's not a good spot.
Well, and then if you park it out by the old liquor store, where are you going to park all the cars?
Well, the old liquor store, Shane, probably has to come down, don't it? And that's an expense, I understand that, but you can't just stand there.
We don't know.
It has to come down, but it's going to need some work.
Major repairs, yeah.
There's, there's, there is going to be a question of parking, right? But that goes to the size of the building, that goes to how big it is. We don't know the answer to that question yet at this point. The other thing that I would, I would say is, is don't be limited to just a meeting room, you know? I mean, folks are thinking, well, it's just a meeting room, you know, to have events and stuff like that. Maybe it's not. You know, the, the biggest thing going right now in these kinds of things are what's called activity centers. And it wouldn't just be meeting rooms, but it would be other things on top of that. Maybe it includes some indoor recreation, maybe it, it probably includes some meeting rooms, you know, maybe it includes a whole variety of other things, educational opportunities for people to go, maybe there's a theater attached to it. There's lots of different ways that you can envision this. It's not just a steel building for 200 people to sit around and, and, you know, socialize. You can do more than that.
And that's in the survey.
That's in the survey.
That's all in the survey.
That's, that's in the survey. That's in the survey.
I think we're going in circles here.
Yep.
You know, it's, it's good discussion, it's something to think about. There's other issues we get to, we're already trying to build a new one, we don't know how we're going to pay for it or where we're going to foot it. There's other issues that we've got to resolve before that, so let's...
Can I, can I move on to that issue then?
Okay.
Because the, the one thing on my staff reports, because we're kind of, you know, there at this point, that I wanted to add, is that, you know, we have to adopt the 2021 budget on December 14th, and I think I had told you that ABDO, by email, that ABDO was working on kind of redoing our rate study and our, our, our debt study. I'm going to meet with them next Wednesday, and I asked them if they could come and meet with you, and I think it would be important to do that and then talk about the 2021 budget, so that when we get to December 14th, we're in agreement about what it's going to look like, and then we can listen to the public at that point and see what they have to say, but it'll be a lot easier if we have some consensus. And so, what I'm suggesting is that on November 30th, that we do a study session, which is next, next Monday, or two, no, I'm sorry, three weeks from today.
Three weeks from today.
Because we have five Mondays in November, normally we don't have five Mondays, but it's an extra day, and so thinking November 30th would be a good day to, to do that, and that gives us a couple of weeks before the budget meeting to make any changes that you want to the budget. Does that, is that something you all would agree to do, and, and does that date work?
The date works with me, I don't know, you know, earlier was probably better, but that's...
We can start at 5:30 or 6:00 if you'd like.
I thought it was earlier in the month, but...
Oh, oh.
That way, if there is any big change, but if, if you think the 30th is a good date...
You've got to get them here.
Yeah, and I, they're not going to be ready.
Okay.
Before the 30th.
Will they be present for that meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Probably by video, but yes.
So the study session would be concerning the...
Concerning the budget, but we'd also get some information on the, on the, because, you know, your rate study should really be driving your rates and, and things like that, and so I wanted them to do that before we had a discussion about things, because it looks to me like, based on the last conversation we had, that there might be some changes based on some new information on the rate study. So do you want to do that? Is there anyone that says no to that?
I'll do it.
What time?
So we're going to do 5:30, 6:00, 6:30?
We can go 5:30.
Does that work for you, Kooz? You're the one usually cut running back as fast as you can.
5:30 will work.
Short of a leg, and run that past.
Does that work for you and them?
Yeah. Okay. Is that time?
Yep.
Diane, can you send emails on this thing now instead of my other computer, my home computer?
It goes to the Glandite at TracyMN.org.
You have a city email that, that I, you haven't used as much, we'll have to work through that, but yes, it is on there.
I've, I've been getting some from citizens, but I've not gotten anything from, from here.
That's because I've still been using your Gmail account for, I should, I should have switched over, but I didn't know if you had access.
I was struggling, so I'm glad I remembered to say something to you. I'm not struggling as much anymore after Diane's two-hour class.
Two hours, oh my God.
Do we need a motion to call that meeting, a special meeting?
Um, it wouldn't hurt to have a motion to call the special meeting for November 30th. Yeah.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion is carried. Perry, you want to put that in the paper for us? Anything else under staff reports?
No.
Okay, the next item then is Resolution 2020-72, polling place for 2021.
That's just the standard, there's really nothing that's changed.
Yep, there's only one polling place, so...
Yep.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-73 to designate the BMC as our polling place for 2021.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? Call the vote.
Landite.
Aye.
Al.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is to call for a public hearing for the sale of the MPC on November 23rd.
Mayor, this is just basically to set a date for a, a public meeting about, about it on the 23rd.
And to alleviate anybody's fears or spreading of any more rumors, if they agree at, at that public hearing to sell it, it doesn't mean they're going to, it just means that we can, correct?
You can decide whatever you want at that time. I mean, ultimately, we've had a, we have a contract for deed that we've contemplated, we would want the Platte Moose to come and talk about it, and we would receive any public comment from people about it, and you could decide to approve that sale and contract for deed that night, you could decide not to.
Right.
You could decide that you wanted to delay it, there's, you, you have all kinds of options, but, but ultimately, it's just a public hearing, all you're deciding on is to have that date as the time when you're going to discuss it.
And they'll be here, you think?
Yeah, they'll be here.
Okay, good.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-75, setting the public hearing for 6:45 on the 23rd. There's nothing else going on, or wait, we have, we have the assessment.
It has to be at 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock. It has to be at 7, because we have another public hearing at 6:45.
We'll set it at 7 o'clock then.
Any feedback of what you think, or for anybody showing up for the assessment hearing?
I haven't heard anything.